We will call the January Common Council Meeting to order, which stands for the Fledge of Legion. Would the clerk please conduct a roll call?
Heidi.
Here.
Clinker.
Here.
Nargie.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Alers Meyer.
Here.
Four and present.
Thank you. First on the agenda is election of officers this evening. Any nominations, Mr. Heidi?
I like the name nominate Ron Campbell, my friend.
Okay.
And I think we ought to get... He's going to second that.
I'll second it.
Wow.
If he goes second.
Wow, lots of seconds. Take your pick, Mr. Campbell. Who would you like to second your nomination?
I'll surprise you in a minute.
Okay, excellent nomination for Mr. Ron Campbell. Any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
Thank you, Mr. Downing.
Second.
Thank you. Moves and seconded nominations are now closed. All those in favor of Mr. Campbell presiding signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Come on over.
This is not what Price and Rider signed.
Yes, we're the next contestant.
On down.
Need to catch a tee shirt.
Bye.
First of all, I've been doing this for forty-four years, and this is the first time my family has been in this building. I'm not sure what the meaning of that is, but that's the fact. Next order of business would be the election of a president pro tem.
Mr. Campbell, I would like to nominate Mrs. Nargie for president pro tem. I guess.
Any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
All right, we will have a vote by acclamation that Mrs. Nargie may be president pro tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, may I interrupt just for a moment? I think the mayor has a few comments.
I'm going to declare mayoral privilege tonight. How's that? Is that okay?
Sure.
Well, tonight really is a very special night for all of us. I know that I speak on a professional and personal level for the members of this council, many people in this room, and literally decades and generations of citizens here in Lafayette that have been touched by the life of Ron Campbell. And we are here to recognize Mr. Campbell tonight as he indicated. He served for forty-four years on the Lafayette City Council. But I think just as important, many of us know Mr. Campbell as a teacher, a counselor, a coach, an assistant principal, somebody that all of us could look up to with admiration and respect. He's the epitome of a statesman. He carries himself with dignity. He's meant so much to the Lafayette community. It is very difficult to look anywhere in Lafayette and not see the hand of Ron Campbell. And I know for many of us, he's been an inspiration as we got into government, to public service, on your council, how you think through issues, how you treat people, how you conduct yourself with your constituents, how you conduct yourself at meetings. And through the time, if you think about what's happened over those forty-four years, things like railroad relocation, SIA, Caterpillar, most recently Nonsan, GE, Holiday Inn Hotel, improvements to our downtown, improvements to our park system, a bike pedestrian plan, the leader of the smoking ordinance which seemed so controversial at the time, and now I don't know what we'd do without it, right? Mr. Campbell, to many people in this room, including myself, you have absolutely been a role model, a mentor. You've meant so much to us, and you've helped guide this community for forty-four years. And it's not been lost on any of us, the type of passion that you brought, the type of compassion that you showed, made those tough decisions when necessary, but always did it with respect. If this country, if this state, if this nation had more people like Ron Campbell, it'd be even a better place to live. And we can't thank you enough for those years of service and all the things that you did, from education to be a veteran in the Air Force and what you have done for this council. So if you'd step down here for a minute, I'd like to personally give you something.
Wow. So now come on down.
Huh? He was saying, don't come on down.
Now, there is a certain twist of irony to this, because Mr. Campbell, I'm sure will
remember, I did spend several different times in his office when he was the assistant. But he did teach me discipline. He did teach me discipline. So, Mr. Campbell, with a sincere heart and the most heartfelt pride and admiration for you on a very, very personal level, for all you've meant to me in your guidance and leadership, I'd like to present you with the Royal Order of Marquis de Lafayette. Know by all these presents, whereas the city of Lafayette is named for that dedicated son of liberty, and whereas it is the custom of the city to honor individuals who demonstrate such dedication in Lafayette's behalf, and whereas such an individual, Ronald B. Campbell, has distinguished himself as one who lives a salutary example of humanity, loyalty, inspiration, and wise counsel. Now therefore, recognizing such selfless labors and vast achievements, I do hereby bestow the title of Marquis de Lafayette, witness my hand and the seal of Lafayette, Indiana, this the fourth day of January in the year of our Lord, 2016. So, Mr. Campbell, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Mayor. (Applause) public hearing of two ordinances. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Clinker?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Brown?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Would the clerk then please present the two ordinances, one at a time?
Ordinance 2015-36, an ordinance to vacate a portion of the public alley between Lot thirty-five and Lot thirty-eight, Indiana, and in the original plot of the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Is there any one in the audience that wishes to address this particular ordinance? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jason Ramsland, representing the Greater Lafayette Public Transportation Corporation. GLPTC is more commonly known as City Bus. I imagine most of you are probably pretty familiar with City Bus. I'll be brief, because I understand this is a second hearing. You guys have already decided once. So we'll just note that we're, if you look at page six of your board packet tonight, it presents a drawing there. This is just tidying up an issue that's existed for quite a long time. There's a spot in between Lot thirty-five and Lot thirty-eight on that sixth page of your agenda packet here. And this is a piece of property where the City Bus Downtown Transfer Center already exists. It's already built on top of it. City Bus is now buying from the city or from the redevelopment commission. The remainder of the property on which the Downtown Transfer Center is already built, and in order to complete that transaction to everybody's satisfaction, the alleyway that has not been vacated is, we're seeking to vacate that in addition to the spot that's already been vacated to the north of there. I'm happy to entertain questions if you have any. I suspect that you don't, so I'll be seated.
Thank you. Any other citizen input concerning this rezoning? All right, then I would entertain a motion to reconvene for the purpose of the next ordinance.
So moved.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2015-38, an ordinance to vacate a portion of the public right-of-way in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this particular ordinance?
Good evening. Kevin Riley with Riley and Peter and Schreier. I represent the petitioner, Timberstone Development. I was here in December. I don't have anything new to add to my comments from December, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can I answer questions? Do folks make me presidents so that I would not question this particular? (Laughter). Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion that we reconvene for the purpose of the city's business. Mr. Clinker?
So moved.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify... We did.
We haven't done the minutes yet.
We haven't done the minutes yet.
We haven't approved the minutes yet.
Oh, you haven't?
No, we haven't.
That's what I was asking.
We need to, no.
Okay. Oh, let's do some. You have been mailed the minutes of the previous meeting. What's the favor, Councilman?
I move that the minutes be approved as communicated.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any corrections to those minutes? There being none, we would entertain a roll call vote for approval of the minutes.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing. Aye. Minutes approved, eight to zero. Okay.
Disposal and presentation of claims.
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of the city offices on file in the city clerk's office.
Water Pollution Control Department monthly November, Fleet Maintenance monthly November, and Water Works Department monthly November.
Those reports are on file as of stated in the city clerk's office. You may call anytime between...
Eight and four-thirty.
Eight and four-thirty, and examine those particular reports. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2015-36, an ordinance to vacate a portion of the public alley between Lot thirty-five and Lot thirty-eight in the original plot of the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
What's the pleasure of counsel?
I move that we hear an approved ordinance, 2015-36.
Mr. Downing?
Second.
Any questions by members of the common council? Anybody in the audience wishes to address this ordinance? There being no comments, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2015-36?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
All right, ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. You need to go back to the ordinance for the score.
No, because that's for first reading, and we're on second reading, and then we'll go back to first reading.
Ordinance 2015-37.
An ordinance to amend ordinance 2015-26, an ordinance fixing the salaries of the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement poll members of the police and fire departments of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2016.
What's the pleasure of the counsel, Mr. Heidi?
I move for ordinance 2015-37.
Mr. Reynolds?
Second.
Yes, sir.
I spent some time in your office, too.
(Laughter).
The faces keep on turning. No, they've all been pretty good.
Before you have amendment to the budget, we have pure fitness trainers that we were paying $1,000. We made an error not include that in the original budget. Those pure fitness trainers are in the Lafayette Fire Department, the Lafayette firefighters have been trained to work one-on-one with the firefighters to improve their health and fitness. And I would like to have the board approve that, the ordinance time.
Any questions of the chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments by citizens? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2015-37?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2015-38.
An ordinance to vacate a portion of the public right-of-way in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
What's the pleasure of the counsel?
I move we hear an approved ordinance, 2015-38.
Second.
Comments? Anyone have any questions about this particular rezoning? Is there a representative present for the request of that rezoning? Yes, sir. Does anyone have any questions of the petition? No. Thank you. Any comments by other members of the audience? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2015-38?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2015-38.
An ordinance to vacate a portion of the public right-of-way in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
What's the pleasure of the counsel? Mr. Clinker?
I move we hear 2015-1, ordinance on first reading.
Mrs. Nargie?
I second it.
Comments by, or questions by the common council?
Do you want me to?
Good.
I can talk about this a little bit. This is an ordinance to amend the historic preservation ordinance to adopt a local Wabash historic district. It is a one-property district that the property owner has actually filed a petition to have this designated as a local historic district. The Historic Preservation Commission considered this request and recommended approval at their December meeting, and this will establish that district.
Any questions of Mr. Trump? Any members of the audience wish... Yes, sir. Would you step forward, please? Identify yourself.
Hi, I was just, I'm new to the city, and I'm not a resident of the Wabash neighborhood, but I was just curious to know what is it about this particular property that merits this designation?
Could I have your name and address, please?
Sure. Stefan Sequera, 707 South Street, Lafayette.
Thank you. I believe I'm not supposed to pitch on this slide, but you...
Yeah, that's fair. Just come on up.
Are you interested in possibly proposing a home or some property? I mean, can we give you any?
No, sir.
Direction for that?
No, my question was just purely informational.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016-1?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
That is the final ordinance for consideration, now resolutions.
Resolution 2016-01, the resolution approving the detail of the 2016 water and wastewater department budgets.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I move we hear and approve resolution 2016-01 on first reading.
Downing?
Second.
Questions or comments by members of the common council? Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, thank you, council members. As you know, every year we have to bring this budget, even though it's been approved by the Board of Works, to you to satisfy Indiana code, and so that's what we're doing today. The utilities have the same rates as the rest of the civil city. Their insurance is the same, so that those two rates don't change. And really, for the most part, the methodology is the same as we apply to the civil city side. Water Works, the overall budget for the Water Works in 2016 actually decreased $144,500. Really, even with the changes that are there, the reason for that drop is, quite frankly, we've had a couple of very wet summers, so there hasn't been a lot of watering of lawns, and the fact that, you know, we have not had a rate increase since about 2001. And with those two factors, we've actually dropped the amount of money that we're going to transfer into the depreciation fund, excuse me, by about $250,000 in order to make sure that the budget's balanced. So that's the big difference there. The Water Pollution Control Department had a slight increase of about 2.6%. They, again, most of their expenses are payroll-related, like everybody else's. A big decrease for them was due to the fact of all the bond refundings that you had voted on earlier. Those payments have dropped because of the smaller interest rates, and we've been able to save some money there as well. So, and there's several projects that are on tap and continuing to be on tap for the combined sewer overflow and other phosphorus-controlled water pollution. We still have our water, our meter change-out program for Water Works, and these budgets are, like everything, very conservative, but they are balanced and look forward to having a good year.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments by members of the audience concerning the budget of the Water Works? There being no comments or questions, if the clerk would have a roll call vote on the first and final reading of resolution 2016-1?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Reports by the mayor.
For my report.
Thank you very much. Reports by councilmen. I would, at this time, ask you to examine the appointments or the committees that you're on. Tell me if you would like to change, or if you'd like to be on a particular committee, and we will work to satisfy those requests to the best of our ability. So get that to me as soon as you can, and we'll go from there.
And I have copies if you guys don't remember which committees you're on, if I'm, so.
Public comment. Now, you're all familiar faces, you've all heard this before, but once again, we're going to enforce the fact that we are going to keep the comments to be above average, or not too critical of anyone. So Perry, you can't say anything about me.
I don't want to end up in your office.
So, anyone in the audience?
Can be approved, too.
Wishes to make any comments? Yes, sir?
Hello again. Stefan Sequera, 707 South Street. So I moved to, I'll try to stay within my three-minute allotment. I moved to Lafayette in March of this year, had never been to Indiana before, so am liking it so far. I live in downtown. I initially lived at Fourth and Alabama, and now I live at Seventh and, or on South Street between Seventh and Eighth. I love living downtown, it's great. It's the, actually the main reason I moved to Lafayette in the first place. But what I would like to discuss is the lack of grocery stores in downtown. I don't know if this issue has ever been raised before, probably has, but I know that downtown is up and coming, at least that's been my impression from just living here about nine months or so. Seems like a lot of new residents are moving in. There's the apartment complex that just went up on Alabama between Fourth and Fifth. There's the planned complex going up on the riverfront and the old National Site. There's, of course, River Place, I think it's called, which has been up for a few years And all of that is great, and what I would like to see is more amenities in the downtown area. And by amenities, I'm referring specifically to stores and businesses that offer just everyday goods and services, not boutique businesses, although I have nothing against those. I love, you know, antique shops just as much as the next person, and candy shops and coffee shops and that sort of thing. That's all wonderful. It gives downtown charm and uniqueness, but for those of us who actually live downtown and make downtown our home, we need those amenities. We need to be able to just pop to the grocery store if we need to get something, or, you know, if we need to pick up an extra sweater or something, it would be nice to have that nearby. Now, I don't own a car, and that's by choice, and I know it's pretty unusual, but I'm kind of a closet tree hugger, and so I think that's one reason, but also just, you know, the expense and also the hassle of owning a car. Again, I know it's strange, but it is what it is, and I enjoy getting around on foot and on bicycle, and the City Bus is great. I love the bus system here. So again, I just want to advocate for that. I know we don't live in a communist society where the government basically just, you know, drops stores wherever, you know, we live in a free-market economy, so I know there's only so much the city government can do, but I just want to request that the city council, if you haven't already, I'd like to request that the city council do whatever it can to encourage a grocery store to be cited in downtown, and other businesses that offer just everyday goods and services. Thank you.
I don't think you would find a dissenting opinion in this room about what you've talked about. A bit of history, we did have a grocery store down where the, I guess it would be Fourth and...
Where Yidjibon Restaurant?
Yes, Yidjibon. There was a grocery store in there, and it could not survive. But I think we are seeing a greater population growth in the city or within downtown area. So it's always a possibility. We have dreamt of having, what's the name of the grocery store in Indianapolis?
Trader Joe's.
What is it?
Trader Joe's.
Trader Joe's.
Yeah.
Of trying to get them in there. And there has been some comments by people in the city to try to get that, but it doesn't lend itself, apparently, or our city doesn't lend itself, the downtown area, to what they want. So we are completely open to any suggestions about that, and any, and the mayor would be the first one to talk to, because he's, I think, with the things that you're seeing in the downtown, the promenade and places like that, the new apartments down there, and the ones that you mentioned on Fourth Street, we're getting a growth in population within the downtown area, so it's entirely possible that will happen. We'll all keep our fingers crossed, and we'll all cooperate as much as we can to get that done. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by members of the audience? Perry? You said you weren't going to say...
Perry, Barbe, 37th and Redbud Avenue, and no, I was not never in your office. I want to congratulate you on your 45 years of service to this great city.
It shows you can fool some of the people some of the time.
I know we don't have any of the four... I want to congratulate you on your 45 years of service to this great city.
It shows you can fool some of the people, some of the towns.
I want, I know we don't have any of the forecast, snow in the forecast, but I just wanted to remind everybody, when the snow comes, hopefully we don't get any of that stuff, we don't want, but consider the elderly, take the time to cover their sidewalks for them, and, and it just only takes 10, 15 minutes to do it, because a lot of them can't do it, and remember the schoolchildren. And I know we have a fine, a 12-hour window now, but consider your elderly and the kids. And I just want, I hope everybody has a healthy New Year's this year, and Happy New Year's.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
My name is Randy Anderson, I live at 1824 Maple Street. About a year ago, or not, around a year ago, I attended a meeting here where a program was represented, presented called the TNR Program, which is the Trap, Neuter, and Release Program for spay, for feral cats. At that time, our neighborhood, you know, on the north end, was identified as a problem area and in need of this service. Since that, we have absolutely, seen absolutely no activity toward trapping or anyone even presenting this as a need further than that one meeting. I know funds were, were awarded to that, that function, and I don't know if there's any kind of oversight see to it that anything has been done, but in my opinion and in my eye, I see no advances in that project at all.
Have you at any time called the animal control officer?
I have, I have not. I know some of the people in our neighborhood have and requested information on this, and they were, they, it was very frustrating.
They will react, or they will react to that, you know, they have to identify where the feral cat is located before those people can go out and trap them, but there is a program, and it is, and it...
We can provide all that information, the animal control officer does have it. All the people that have agreed to be colony caretakers is what we need. It's the actual people in the neighborhood where the colonies are that agree to be colony caretakers, where we trap and release. We went through almost the whole $10,000 that we allotted to the Almost Humane Society, literally on hundreds and hundreds of cats and other dogs, especially pit bulls, and so there are a lot of people in the community that have come forward to be colony caretakers, and we have done it a lot. Now, whether specific people in your neighborhood have volunteered to do that and signed up, I'll have to check with Josh, but we have made substantial progress. We went through just about all of the money that the council allotted through doing spay and neuters throughout last year. We did about $10,000 for money that the council appropriated, so we are doing, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. But you might alert the neighborhood to be on the lookout and identify particular feral cat colonies that they can react to then. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mr. Heidi?
I move to adjourn.
Stop. We have some council appointments that have to be made, and two of these people are here, so the rest of them are not going to be able to defend themselves. Dave Base is going to be on the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term. Jerry Reynolds is going to be on the Area Plan Commission for a four-year term, and we thank you for the previous four years of your work, it's been very good. Kevin Clinker on the Historic Preservation Commission, thank you for all your work, Kevin. Dan Teeter on the Redevelopment Commission, and John Theme on the Redevelopment Commission. And unless there's anybody that you don't agree with, or you would like to put somebody else's name in, I would ask for a vote of acclamation that these five people be reappointed to those particular terms of office. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.